All right, it's six o'clock, I'm calling the meeting to order. And I'd like to start with Diane, if you could give me the role of who's on the phone.
Sure, we have Charlie, Trish, Chief Jewitt, Chief Elquidino, Nancy, Jack Kozak, yourself, Larry, Tina, and Terry.
Okay, awesome. And as we always do, Trish, could you give us an update on what's been going on, please?
Absolutely. Hopefully, this won't be very long. Again, I try to take out some of the information that's been so repetitive with the same answers, but I do try to leave in some information that, you know, could apply to us somewhere down the road, or maybe something that just is an interesting little tidbit. So that being said, I'm gonna start with Thursday morning, the first call. They talked about the planning of safety and wellness. They distributed some mental health awareness documents yesterday, along with additional cloth-based mask guidances. We've got a lot of questions. We've got so many people that are offering to make masks, and they just wanna make sure that there's guidelines, especially for first responders. They also reminded us yesterday morning that the governor held a press briefing at 2:00 P.M., which maybe some of you watched. As of yesterday morning, we had 1,139 persons testing positive with COVID in New Hampshire, which unfortunately was up 48 from the day before. We have 365 persons that recovered from COVID, which is up from 36, so that's a good thing. Unfortunately, we had 32 deaths attributed to COVID, and that was up by five as of yesterday. There were also some, they wanted to remind us that they're doing mobile testing, and they're doing more and more of this. And so they sent the clinic to Nashua because they were working with long-term care facilities. You probably saw on the news, we had some issues with one of the Nashua locations having multiple deaths, which did attribute to our death count, unfortunately, that's very sad. Military support, they're working on increasing numbers at the call center because there's more and more calls. And military is also working with the state police and local police because of more PPE deliveries that were scheduled for Saturday, that's tomorrow. The Joint Information Command talked about social media, still lots of chatter out there, talking about, you know, the new confirmed cases. A lot of talk that some of the numbers, and unfortunately, I forgot to check with the chiefs today, but some of the numbers that you see that are going across the screen are not accurate. I can tell you when I checked yesterday with the chiefs, and I'm not privy to this information, just so that you know, so I have to ask, that although the stuff on the screen said five to nine, we have one to four in Newton as of yesterday. And I didn't check today, I don't know if the chiefs did, but part of that chatter is about the cases that seem to be not really as we know according to the list that we're getting from the E-911. There was chatter about the nursing homes, and how more and more are testing positive, and how can we help them? A lot of talk about unemployment, what are we gonna do about that? Now, this is all in social media. And there was also social media talk about reopening the economy. As far as logistics, they reminded us that, and this is kinda probably foreign talk to most of you, but one of the things that myself or Larry have to do on the EOC website, which is Emergency Operating Center, we have to add mission tasks daily, and activities daily, and it's reminding us that evidently some people are putting in missions and tasks, and they're not closing them out. So, but it's one thing Larry's pretty fussy about, so we weren't one of the people on the chopping block, so to speak. They also talked about 85 first responders are in quarantine, 11 are staying in alternative lodging, and continuing to work through patient notification with the public health lab and the convenient M.D. They're still talking about supporting PPE distribution, and they reminded us that, you know, we may put in a mission task according to what Police Chief Jewitt or Chief Elquidino says that we need. And they reminded us that when we see that stuff in there, and then they tell us on the news or wherever that, I don't know, 6 million things came in, they reminded us that this distribution goes out to hospitals, long-term care facilities, other places other than just really the first responders. So, reminded us to be patient. They reminded us to keep tracking costs. Again, purchases, we know that they're looking at 75%, and that has not changed, although they're hoping to get 100%. We haven't got that official notification yet. And the Safety and Wellness Department said working off-site, they're setting up medical screening and social distancing, and continue to really create a new society according to what we're dealing with. It's really a new way of living. That was yesterday morning. Now, Thursday at the legal call, they've now mentioned, and Nancy, you'll probably wanna put this in your notes, because I know you usually listen, we're now gonna reduce the legal calls to just Tuesdays, not Tuesday and Thursday. If things start getting more and more questions, then they'll open up to two days. And the numbers haven't changed, Nancy. Questions, some of the things, again, this is a legal call. So, somebody said, "My understanding is that the governor has been having weekly calls with mayors of 13 cities. What are they discussing, and why are the mayors of these 13 cities getting different information than other municipalities that are not on the call because we don't have a mayor? We have a board of selectmen, or we have a town manager." There's concern that they, these 13 communities are gonna have a heads-up on funding before all the other ones that aren't on the call. It was a pretty controversial call. And they said, "We will raise this up with the unified command, and to see if there's anything we can do for that particular issue." It is an important one. None of us really knew on the call that the mayor was actually having conversations with 13 other cities. So, that's interesting, we'll have to keep an eye on that one. Another question or comment was, another town actually echoes the previous issues about the mayors. They said, "Why aren't we involved, just because we're too small to have a mayor?" There was also a question, and again, their favorite thing is to get back to us. Another question was relative to vehicle registration. They're wondering when or if motor vehicles will be running classes for agent credentials for the town clerks. It seems there's no luck with motor vehicles, other than to say, "The form has to be signed by the agent on their system, and their agent is gone, so how are we supposed to get people certified?" And the answer is, they were gonna reach out to Elizabeth Bellicki, and probably Mary Jo or Cheryl would know who that is, and follow up with this issue, and they're gonna push out the answer. And they said, "When they get the answer, they're also gonna note it in the web EOC, so the rest of us can see the answer." And they also gave us Elizabeth's phone, so if Cheryl or Mary Jo need it, I've got it. There was another comment, "In the absence of the governor changing his mind and closing campgrounds, do we have local authority to close the campgrounds?" And you're gonna hear this with the next few reports that I have. Campgrounds is still a huge issue, as somebody just mentioned about the newspaper, front page. The answer was, "Perhaps local ordinances could decide if this is possible," in other words, enforcing not opening the campgrounds. They added, "There's no universal ruling," but said it could be a municipality specific. Generally, the New Hampshire Municipal Association, who was on the call, has been advising that it is municipal, oh my goodness, my tongue is getting stuck, that municipality really have to take direction from the state when asking campgrounds to close. They would be happy to explore this in other avenues, but they're reminding us, "We really should be following the governor's emergency order 17." Now, keep in mind, that may change. Okay, another comment, and this was a close border to us, I usually don't tell you the towns, but this was Southampton. So, Southampton said, "We have a campground, and we all know who this is, because it borders us, and we're on the Massachusetts border, and the ruling that the governor is giving is not clear in statement." They wanted a definite answer about the guidelines for these campgrounds regarding like spacing of the sites, or how are the campgrounds to stay closed, or how are they supposed to open? They're closing their stores, they're closing their beach houses, their bathhouses, and they want clarification. So, the answer was, "The emergency order has indicated that campgrounds can be open, and it would take additional clarification and guidance in an additional emergency order from the governor to mandate that they close." They also said, "Absent of this, emergency order to be amended," they're gonna throw this at the police, so they said, "It's really an enforcement issue of other provisions." So, enforcement, the police could talk about gathering, social distancing, and quarantining. So, if they're coming out of state to, say, one of our campgrounds, and they came from, I don't know, Connecticut, I don't know how our police department is supposed to enforce that, but you could toss it out to the campgrounds and say, "Understand these guidelines." And they suggested, once these guidelines, if they get amended, it could be given out to the campgrounds, and EMD Foot has already been working on that. I actually asked a question at the request of Kate, and I just said, my question was, one of my selectmen, I never say your name, so you're all safe. One of our selectmen reached out and said that the senators, one of the senators, Senator Sherman, was on a call yesterday, and there seemed to be a conflict on the call regarding campgrounds that's different from the emergency order from the governor. And the answer that I got was, "We don't know what Senator Sherman said, so if I could give them more details, they could find out the answer for us." There were some additional things that I talked about, I already shared this with Matt, and he will share it at the appropriate venue, no sense to waste a lot of time on it. Then we have another town, this actually came from Hampton, "Is there any further clarification coming in regarding to emergency order 25, which talks about the interest rate and penalties on property taxes concerning, is it forward or backward, looking in the nature of abatements?" The answer was, "The decision is at the discretion of the local authorities, and in our case, it would be our board of selectmen. If you did it, it would apply to all at the time that you decide to do it. The direction on advice determining the length of time that you grant an abatement, for you can decide to apply it to the next tax bill by determining the length that it would be in effect." They also added that guidance has not been completely issued on this, but it's absolutely being discussed, and when it comes out, they will send it to each, they will put it on the EOC and send it to all the municipalities, so they will have options. Another town asked, it was a restaurant owner approached the police department, and he wants to put picnic tables in a parking lot, and it would follow social distancing, so they'll put them far enough apart, and food could be eaten at the tables, and the question is, "Is this okay?" And the Attorney General's Office answered, and said that even though outdoor seating associated with a restaurant is not allowed, it's only for takeout, so this actually would be a violation. And again, call your police department, don't you love it, chief? Another town, actually a police department, asked, "Emergency order 27." The Section 2 talks about lodging. It said, "Provided should include hotels, B&amp;Bs, etc.," which implies that they do it through agencies, and that they are under the emergency order prohibiting hotels. Does this qualification apply to short-term rentals, even if it wasn't through an agency? Like, maybe it was just, you know, you own a house, and you wanna do a B&amp;B, or you wanna rent out your house? Is this okay? Does it fall under this emergency order as well? And the answer is, yes, they do. Another question was, "If they continue to book appointments, who enforces this?" And the answer is, "Please review the enforcement memo that went out to the Attorney General's Office, and Chief Jewitt, and Chief Elquidino, and the EMD Foot all have copies of it. The executive order can be a misdemeanor, however, they're saying, you know, this is new territory. You know, please, the first step is education, and try to get them to voluntarily comply. And then, the second step, if they're gonna give you a hard time, is issue a citation for misdemeanor. And then, the local police, the third part of this was, the local police could call the Attorney General's Office through the number on the memo that we all got." Another question was, "This particular town wants to know," from the New Hampshire Municipal Association, "If they have a board meeting tomorrow, and it takes up the campground issues, and drafts a joint communication on the issue to send up to the governor, this effort is being made by state on the campground, or what effort is being made, because many other municipalities are doing this." And everybody's doing this, you probably saw, somebody mentioned about the newspaper, the front page. There were so many people, I think the most important thing they're talking about is campgrounds, not how sick, you know, you might get, which is quite interesting. And so, everything is being sent to the governor. Again, another county said, "They run a campground in Carroll County, and they've got a lot of campsites that people from out of state are in, and there's mixed messaging. What are they supposed to be doing?" They want clarification, whether or not locals have the authority to put stricter guidelines on the campground, that maybe they can or cannot open. And unfortunately, the answer was, they don't have a universal answer to this. There are local ordinances or permits that might require or pertain to campgrounds in your particular town, but the municipality should follow the statewide guidelines. And they then added, "When dealing with enforcing emergency orders, the municipality should take the direction from state." But that doesn't mean that you couldn't shut down a campground, like, say, because the health officer said there were other guidelines or violations, not necessarily that they were just a campground. So, that was leaked today. This morning, the first call this morning, was that they have three call centers that are now operational. 211 is still, you know, the go-to number if people call, and even if people call you and talk to you because you're an official of our town, and they have questions, instead of giving, you know, information that you think you heard, or maybe that I even told you, the best thing is to tell them to call 211. It supports the Division of Public Health, Nurses Employment Security, there's legal there, CDC is there, and Municipal Association is there. So, it really is the universal number to give out. Also, Senator Hassan was grateful for the work and professionalism, and said they're continuing to work in Congress and the White House to make sure New Hampshire has whatever it needs. She said she had a call with the Democratic delegates today, and they're working on a plan for the next legislative meeting to help testing centers. And contact tracing, you heard me talk about that before, they wanna know, if you have it, where are you, where maybe did you get it, and who maybe have you contacted? So, they're trying to kinda nip this in the bud, so that it doesn't expand. They talked, they reminded us that the State Emergency Operating Center is still at full activation, that Governor Sununu issued an emergency order 31, which was about establishing COVID-19 long-term care and a stabilization program. And he also issued emergency order number 32, which is the extension of the closing of schools and to continue remote learning, you probably all heard about that yesterday. Then they talked about cases, and I want you to know, I'm gonna toot my own horn here, when they talked about cases, they actually made a 10,000-person error. They said that we had 10,211 positive cases, and I called them on it, and it was really supposed to be 1,211. So, I'm toot my own-
That's a little different.
Yeah, just a little different, I was happier with my number.
Yeah, thank God.
Yes. And then we had 455 recovered, we have 34 deaths, 187 hospitalizations, 74 current hospitalizations, and 66 tests pending, so we're waiting to hear about that. The Department of Health said they're expecting another shipment on PPEs on Saturday, and they're gonna continue to do mobile testing on the road and collect specimens. The military commented and said the National Guard activated 148 members to support two new call centers. Logistics, they said they're continuing to operate and identify areas where they need assistance, and then, once they establish that, if the National Guard is needed, they will send people out. They're also using National Guard for security shipment on Saturday, and they're coordinating volunteers throughout the state of New Hampshire, and very positive about the amount of people that have stepped up to volunteer. Operation-wise, as far as our first responders, we had 17 positive first responders, 66 quarantined, nine are in alternative lodging. They're working on source-based testing and a new protocol for that. They reminded us they're continuing to work with convenient M.D. and patient notification on public health labs. They said they were able to distribute to the conservation officers up probably in the north country, up in the northern part of the state, for rescue groups for people that went hiking, and then, I don't know, got lost, I guess. They also talked about planning to escort a security mission for PPEs at Manchester Airport. They said, "This troop is assigned to security for exercises in freedom of speech at the State House tomorrow." Evidently, they're expecting something tomorrow. And troop is also assigned to the security checkpoint for New Hampshire employment security, and they're gonna work on trying to train staff to get this happening faster than it's happening. They also said they're working to meet the call center demands, which are pretty high at this point, and they will keep the project up and running through the weekend. They also said that the Joint Information Command remains staffed. Media trends, so up in social media, they're talking about, the volume remains high, talking about COVID. They said, "As social media, they're focusing on extending remote learning, a lot of conversation about that, now that that just came out yesterday. There's a lot of discussion about when the state's gonna open, they're hearing what other states are doing across the United States, so there's chatter about that, and of course, discussion about campgrounds." They reminded us, the safety and wellness end of this was, you know, remind us about social distancing and hand washing. The contact tracing team was mobilized as of yesterday, and there should have been an email that went out about sick leave and procedures. They also said regarding safety and wellness, that twice a day, this came out as a reminder, that twice a day, we need to make sure that we're cleaning our individual desks and offices. So, if you're having people coming in to do some work, also, those areas should be cleaned either by them or somebody else, and I can tell you, police and fire are doing this every two to three hours. Okay, that was this morning. Noon time today. Okay, again, Maggie was on the phone today, again thanking everyone for their hard work. She said she's in an ongoing negotiation about the next COVID package, that they're looking into adding more funding for small businesses, hospitals, and local communities. She said she could reach out to her office, and gave her office number and her cellphone number, if anyone wants it, I'll share that. And they're working on getting all communities to get testing resources that they need. Jennifer Harper just gave us some updates, reminding us that our calls, again, are Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and legal would only be on Tuesday. She also reminded us that the governor announced the school remote learning through the end of the year, order 31 was long-term care, order 32 was from the schools. They said the cases was 1,211, up 72, deaths 34, which was up 2, total cases 722, which was down by 20, recovered 455, that's up by 90, and hospitalized was 187. PPEs, another full plane is coming in tomorrow, the 18th, and another plane full of PPEs is coming in on the 28th. 9 million surgical masks and more are on the way. Gowns are coming, but it is the most challenging. If you need gowns, put in an order in the web EOC. Again, they shared plumber's phone, and reminded us, "If you need PPEs, if you're really low, and you're afraid you run out, call him, otherwise use the procedure, which is, put it in the web EOC." They also said that if we've got some PPEs that we can't use, I guess I'll use the example, maybe we've got small gloves, trade it out with them, and they will give you what you need and take what you don't need. So, both chiefs and Larry, if we've got something that that's the case, and I don't know if we do, we can trade it. Fire Marshal Perici said that they're asking now the hospitals to do testing. If they've got a patient, they said, "The source-based patient testing, if you've got the patient, we want you to do the testing and get the results." They said, "The Department of Health has authorized expediting the test if somebody is in the hospital, and they've been exposed to your first responders. So, the hospitals have to ask, who were you near? Were you near an ambulance, a fire department, a police department, EMS?" So, that's another little section that they've added that we didn't have before. If we have any questions about testing, they gave us a phone number. They also talked about a funding document that's going out, and an indemnification letter, and that's about the alternative care sites. I haven't seen that yet, but I'm sure it's coming. Now, we have questions. So, one of the questions was, "Oxygen supply in the state and nationwide, is it a problem? Should we be worrying about oxygen?" And the answer was, "Supply is not a problem, and they're monitoring it." An EMS question was an update from a few weeks ago, again, campground opening. The answer was, "Many letters have been sent to Sununu. This is not an easy decision." Sununu is relooking now at the campground issues and taking in all the letters that he received. A fire chief asked, or stated, "That overnight, many towns got stimulus funding from Department of Health, which actually was unexpected. Ordinarily, we'll have to hold a public hearing to accept the money. Do we have to have a public hearing to accept these funds?" And the answer was, "We'll follow up with you." An EMD asked about bathhouses at campgrounds, gosh, we can't get away from this. If they only have one bathhouse, do we keep it closed, or open it and keep cleaning it? And the answer was, "Well, they should, if they're washing, they must keep social distancing." I don't know about those group showers, I don't know about that. And if social distancing is required, then obviously, you're gonna have to keep cleaning it, but let us get back to you on that answer. There was another person that said their employee tested positive, and do we have to notify other employees? And they said, "Will we be followed up with public health, and then, what happens?" So, they said they will determine who has been in close contact with that employee within the last 48 hours. And then, the employer would have to ask, again, who they've been in contact with, and then, call or email or however, communicate with those people, and tell them that they perhaps should self-quarantine. And she said, the question went on to say, "Do I have to tell people that maybe weren't in contact with this employee?" And they actually said, "No, you don't have to tell anyone else." They did say that the public health investigator will follow up and contact and actually start the investigation, and figure out who the person has been in contact with. They said they're trying to be very proactive, the Department of Safety, and has been working in lines of communication to kinda get- in lines of communication to kind of get guidance, so people aren't confused as to what to do. And then, the last piece was the search and rescue teams. There was somebody who said, "We've got other search and rescue teams that need PPEs and don't have them, and because they're up in who knows where, Hokey-Fenokee Town, in the mountaintop, they also don't have, like, they can't set up a computer and request it in an EOC." So, they said, "Call us, and we will get the PPEs to them, however we have to." And that finishes my call.
All right, thank you. I'd also like to advise people, if they haven't seen it yet, the three-phased approach that the president announced last night. It's in the papers today. It's on, obviously, if you Google it, you'll find it. But something I would, you know, caution people on is, if you look at that, the governors do have control over, you know, the president did a kind of a 180 in 72 hours, but he did last night say that the governors have the option of following those guidelines, but the key thing will be, and Charlie Baker said this today, and, you know, I almost said John Sununu, but Chris Sununu is following suit with Massachusetts. He said it before, because we're so intertwined in terms of workforce and stuff, that what they're going to look for is 14 days of a sharp decrease in positive testing. So, if you look today, Massachusetts had their highest single-day positive tests reported. So, the light's at the end of the tunnel, but it's just a little bit of a light, and at least, if you, like I said, look at this yourself, if you look at the phased approach, it seems pretty prudent to me. And, you know, I foresee, if you look at it, you know, maybe in Phase 1, we have people in town offices again, but Phase 2 would be more of opening town buildings. In those, by the way, interesting thing is, Phase 2, you're opening the schools again. So, as our governor has said, he's not opening them until September. So, it's kind of interesting, there's flexibility there. In this, I was saying before everybody got on the call, my gut feeling, for what it's worth, and it's probably worth nothing, is I think the campgrounds are going to get closed down, because I think it's one of those things, they begged off on it because it wasn't a burning platform, you know, because it was colder, the colder months, but now, I think, you know, Trish mentioned campgrounds about 100 times in the last half hour, so it's definitely becoming a problem. So, I wouldn't be shocked if the governor shut them down for a while. Anything else on people's minds related to COVID-19 that they're hearing?
Mr. Chairman, when you have a sec?
Chief Elcudino.
Just a point for the board. The fire department wants to thank Trish and Larry from the EOC. We were able to receive 200 masks, combination of surgical masks and 95 masks. We only had about 20 surgical masks left, so the delivery they made yesterday was a big help to the fire department.
All right, thank you, Trish and Larry. Good job. That's a lot of masks.
Thank you. It is.
So, that should keep us going for quite a while, I would think. Anything else people are hearing? Since I know Jack's on, I don't know if Pete's on too, but what do you guys, at the transfer station, are things going smoothly? I was over there yesterday, it seemed to be.
Yeah, things are going all right. We will be starting to take vouchers this weekend. I will be opening that up to people. We've had a few more start to complain recently, so we're going to get to that.
Okay. So, that'll, taking vouchers will eliminate your concern about handling money, right? So, that'll appease the natives, I would say.
I'm hoping so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. I have a 2019 voucher, can I use that?
You wouldn't be the first.
All right, I'm testing you. That was a test. All right, so, if there's nothing else...
Just a minute from our last, let's see, from April 13th?
And that's just public, correct?
Charlie or...
That, I'll make the most of the minutes, 13 as written.
Okay, so...
Second's a motion.
Second by Kate, I think I heard.
That's me.
Let's go around. Lisa, how do you vote?
I don't think Lisa's on.
Okay, Charlie, how do you vote?
Yay.
Uh, Larry?
Hey.
And Kate?
Hi.
Okay, so, we have four in favor. So, that passes. All right, anything else before we get out of here? All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
All right, I think I had all three selectmen try to motion.
At 6:36 PM.
So, that's good. So, we'll give Kate the motion, we'll give Charlie the second, and we'll give all three of them a yay, plus me is a yay. So, everybody have a nice week...
Thank you so much, everyone.
Everybody have a nice weekend. Stay safe and call me if...
Bye, everybody.
Good night.
See you.
Bye.
Good night.
Thank you, good night. Good night.